Good evening and welcome to the November 19th meeting of the City Beacon Zoning Board of Appeals. I am Jordan Haug and I am the chairman of this board. Tonight we are joined by three of my colleagues with one missing, and we'll come back to the importance of that designation later. The application materials that will be discussed tonight, including any proposed resolutions and other documents, will be available on the city's website. Also on the city's website is a link to the rules and procedures of the zoning board of appeals. Just a quick minute brief on what we do and how we do it. We'll hear each application in the order it's noticed. If you would like to grab an agenda, they're available on the podium. When it is your turn as an applicant to speak, if you could please introduce yourself, name and agenda item that you're here to speak for. And then when we open it up to the public, also if you could state your name for the record and also your address. All comments should be addressed to the board, not to the applicant or the city staff. Would I also like to thank for being here our attorney, our building inspector, and our secretary. Thank you all for being here, of course. It should be noted again that there are only four of -- we are a five-member board and there are only four members present. If we have a quorum, which is three, there are always three votes needed. So if we're a four-member board, we need three of four. If we're a five-member board, a full board, you need three of five. So in an instance where there is less than five, we give the applicant the option at the end of their hearing to adjourn to a later month if they'd like to, to not have a lesser chance to have an additional person up here in order to vote yes. You need three yeses regardless of how many members are actually present at the meeting. And then all of the variances tonight are area variance requests. And the items, there are certain things that we can consider when evaluating area variances, and they're a balancing test. And so it is helpful if your comments, both the applicant and any public comments can speak to those, and I'll just read those out loud, and you'll hear these again tonight as we go through our resolutions. And those items are: Will an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties be created by granting an area variance? Will the proposed action compromise the character of the neighborhood? Can the benefit sought by the applicant be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance? Is the area variance substantial? And will the -- well, not and, but will the proposed variance have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental condition of the neighborhood or district? And is the alleged difficulty self-created? We also must grant the minimum variance necessary as requested. So that being said, that is how we will proceed. Thank you, Montes. And then for the board, has everyone had the chance to review the minutes of the October 16th, 2024 meeting?
Yes.
Are there any comments, edits, or otherwise requests on those? All right, so I will take a motion to approve the minutes for the October 16th, 2024 meeting of the zoning board of appeals.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Montes, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Judy, all in favor.
Aye.
I'll abstain since I wasn't there, so three, nothing with one abstention. All right. And can I have a motion to continue the public hearing on agenda item number one?
So moved.
Motion by Judy, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Stell, all in favor.
Aye.
Agenda item number one is John and Gina Cannon on 41 Ver Plank Avenue.
Thank you, board, for seeing me. I've been in contact with the inspector, and we got permission from him to remove the parts that were at question. We removed in front of the door. That's all been removed. We've also went five feet from the property line and removed that, too. It gave us enough for two cars across, and that's all we can fit on there now. And we're hoping that that'll be acceptable for the board to approve it, and then we can get this taken care of and get it lifted, get the work order, non-work order lifted.
Could you just give us -- I know the board is familiar with this application, but if you could just give us a little bit of a back --
It's happened since the last meeting.
Yes, please. Thank you.
So since the last meeting, I did go out to Mr. Cannon's house. I did go over what was there from the items that the board has brought to his attention and suggestions that the board's made. I kind of went through everything with him, said, "Well, you know, possibly if you can move away five feet from the side property line," you know, "that would remove the one variance that would be requested," the additional variance. And also the two parking spaces within the existing curb cut would be something that the board was, you know, kind of weeding towards. So I kind of went and marked it out with him to make sure that he was five feet away from the property line from the survey that he had given us originally. And his contractor came out and cut and removed the concrete. So now that in front of that garage, there is two parking spaces wide. And not continuing further into the front yard is -- I gave you a picture that shows the -- it's the left side of the house, that the majority of that concrete has been removed.
So given that, what does he need from us now? Sounds like he's in compliance.
He still needs a variance because he's extending the parking in the front yard. Yeah, that prior, it was only one car wide. He left enough concrete there to have it two cars wide. So he's still adding additional parking in the front yard.
But no longer needs a variance on the side yard.
But he wouldn't need the five-foot, you know, the variance for the five-foot setback from the property line. That need for that has been eliminated at this point.
So the additional part for the two cars is really, one could argue, the area taken up by these, literally by these three steps, right?
Yes.
Got it.
Bruce, is a driveway, if they had nothing and then they constructed the house, is a driveway in front of a garage, does that need a variance in and of itself?
Normally, no. Not when it's just in front of the garage, when it's leading to the front.
So what necessitates the --
Once you --
Sorry.
Expand the width, you're creating parking in the front yard because it's not just to go to the garage anymore. Now it'd be for additional parking.
What if you had a two-car garage?
Wouldn't be an issue.
So it's what I was asking, it's these three linear feet, the linear feet of these three steps?
Mm-hmm.
Or two steps, one could argue.
This is all legal.
All this side is legal now.
So in effect, he's asking for a variance for the part that's still on what before was grass on the --
Yes.
That side. And it's a couple of feet, right?
Yeah, how many feet? I don't see that here, do you?
Yeah, he's only added a few feet on the one side, and on the other side, it kind of tapers up. It's almost nothing at one end and opens up a little bit more at the top.
So I'm unclear as to what the variance is that he needs. I don't see it here.
As far as the actual feet? Because it's --
Because I thought he took care of it.
Well, it's still in front of the house, the remaining fringe that he's got.
Bruce, correct me if I'm wrong. The image that we're looking at, it's --
Got that.
Remaining is the clean concrete, right? Those two strips of clean white concrete is the remain. And that is, Judy, what's necessitating the need for the variance for the additional parking space. So originally, it was that older concrete where you have the two squares, and now there's two strips of clean white concrete on the right and left, and that is the new space that has been added.
And the one on the left is out of compliance. Our left looking at it.
Yeah, I guess both would be because they both create --
Well, it's, yeah. He's asking to go from a one-car width driveway to a two-car width driveway with a one-car garage. But the side yard variance on the right side, looking at the front of the house, is within compliance.
Now that's in compliance, right.
So what he's asking for is not necessarily a dimensional variance. He's asking for the right to use the front driveway for two-car width with a one-car garage door.
Okay. And --
He's adding an additional --
So technically, at the end of the day, he's adding an additional parking space in the front yard.
Right.
Where he had one prior, now he has two.
Okay. So what is the exact variance?
The variance is to permit parking in the front yard.
Yeah.
Section 223-26C1 says that in any residence district, no off-street parking facility shall be developed in any required front yard.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Bruce, curb cuts are good? This aligns with the curb cut, right? Or do they need to expand the curb cuts at all?
I didn't hear you.
The curb cuts, they're good or they need to be expanded?
Yeah, the curb cut is good.
Okay.
There's enough for him to get in and out of both vehicles.
Okay.
Anything to add other than, okay. And does anyone -- go ahead.
You've covered everything. Thank you.
Great. And then anyone here from the public that would like to speak on this agenda item?
No. Nope.
Okay. All right. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing on agenda item number one?
So moved.
No, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So not to prejudge, I just think it's worth noting that I think that the lens in which we should consider this, I think, for me at least, is, should not be in the lens of, oh, there was a violation and now there's less of a violation, but it should be from a lens of, you know, should this be granted or not? Meaning -- In and of itself. In and of itself, you know, there shouldn't be some reward for someone doing something, not in compliance, and then just being rewarded for being less.
Yeah, minimizing it.
Not in compliance, right? So I just think it's important to consider in our thoughts. Otherwise, you know, you could do something outrageous and then come back and be less outrageous and be rewarded for it. Just a thought that I had when I was looking at this. With that being said, pulling up the resolution. All right. So we're going to go through the factors. As to whether undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance.
I don't think so. My opinion, no. And the other thing is, Bruce was there, right? And you told him where to cut. So he did what you asked him to do. So to me, if he was gonna, if we wanted more, if we thought we needed more, we should've told him to cut when he had his contractor there.
Yeah, they cut.
So it seems like it's probably okay. Right? He's doing what Bruce told him to do.
Yeah, I concur. I do not think this will deter the rest of the area. And I do appreciate the fact that you did come to us and, you know, like you claimed you didn't know and that you weren't advised. And listen, I get that. It's all of our responsibility to know, but I also have a little sympathy for that as well. And I appreciate the fact that you listened and you acted accordingly on it. So regarding this factor, I don't think it'll add any determines to the neighborhood.
Well, I still think that it's not a great trend for Beacon in general, or in this case in specific, to have people widening their driveways into the front of the house, which is a, you know, just a negative thing from my viewpoint. But I think I'll reserve my other comments related to this for other parts of our evaluation.
Yeah. I mean, I tend to agree with your first comment. I think there's a reason for the code in that if the city wanted to allow parking in the front of houses, they would amend the zoning code to allow parking in the front of houses. This is the second application that we've seen in recent times, and so I think it's just something to be aware of as to whether it will create an undesirable change or detriment. I mean, I think it's noticeable when you drive by. Whether it's undesirable or a detriment, you know, I don't know if it rises to that, but it's, I notice it. So, yeah. As to whether the benefit the applicant, do you want to --
No, I was just going to comment that in the last meeting, I had said, you know, what if you change the stairs so that that walkway would be leading directly to the stairs, which it really is? So to me, that makes it a little bit more acceptable also, that the stairs, the front stairs are right there. So they've got a walkway, so they're having to walk on the lawn.
As to whether the benefit the applicant seeks can be achieved through another method feasible for the applicant to pursue that does not require the area variance. Montes?
Yeah, no, look, I think his goal is to be able to park two cars, and I don't think there's any other way to be able to park two cars on the property. I don't feel that the side yard of the house is large enough to be able to do that without requiring other types of variances that I think would be more intrusive and less desirable. So I don't think it could be achieved any other way.
I agree.
Yeah, I think this is, you know, pretty clear.
Yeah.
He wants to be able to park more cars at the property. I don't see another way it could be done feasibly without, again, other types of variances or the like. As to whether the requested variance is substantial?
Yes, it is.
I would say it's borderline.
I think, given the size of the property, it is substantial proportionally. Is it substantial when you look at it from the number of cars that a family has or should have?
I don't think it's substantial in that regard, but given the size of the property, I think it is substantial.
Yeah, I think, I think if the question is, are you, essentially, the question is, it is a spot for a second car in the front yard. So you're essentially doubling the amount of front yard parking by allowing the variance. I think it is, by that definition, substantial. As to whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district?
No.
I don't think so.
I agree, no.
Yeah, I don't see that one coming to light. As to whether the alleged difficulty is self-created?
Yes.
Yes.
I was, thought you would answer that right away.
Oh.
Yes, definitely self-created, yes.
Yes. And then as to whether this is the minimum variance necessary and adequate to preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood and health, safety, and welfare of the community?
That's my remaining question because it's not clear that this is the least wide driveway that he could come up with. I mean, we see the picture, there's two cars parked next to each other. Could they be parked closer to each other and still support two cars if, in fact, he cut off a little more of the left-hand slice of new concrete?
But isn't this the picture when it's already cut?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's not clear to me if this car was parked closer to that one, could there have been less of the concrete in front? So I'm not sure it's the smallest possible variance that would still satisfy his need.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly see what you're saying, but, you know.
But it would maybe only be nine inches smaller.
Right. So it's, you know, a question of --
It might be immaterial.
Is that material or not?
Well, I think if it, my point is, I think if it is material, then the building inspector should've told him.
Sure.
Go nine inches in when he was there and his contractor came.
Yeah, I agree with Judy.
Not to say, okay, cut this, and then he comes to us, and we say, oh, no, cut seven inches more.
Yeah, I agree with Judy on that. But I would also draw the conclusion that I don't think it's material because it's 19 feet wide in some spaces, right? 19 feet, if I read that properly. The width?
The width of the --
The driveway.
Of the driveway. I think that's 20 feet.
Yeah, the paper said 19 and some and 20 and somewhere else.
Yeah, but the 20, I think, gives him a little bit of room to get between to walk to the front door.
So I don't think 20 feet is --
Yeah, 20.
I think it's adequate for two cars.
Do you recall what it was at the max?
Prior to this?
Yes.
I don't remember the number off the top of my head.
No problem.
I think he shaved off about 10 feet.
Yeah. Is it, what is it normally per car? Is it usually 10 feet per car or a little less?
I think that's a generous number, but I don't think it's overly generous.
Sure.
You want to account for doors, and you want to count for walking.
Yeah, I mean, I thought the same thing. It's, you know, Stell, I was thinking about, kind of on your lines, but then I was thinking, you know, if you're, you would need to be able to fit between the cars in theory, you know, in the middle. So I was thinking the way you were thinking, but then I don't think it is really --
But I would also add something to keep in mind. The proposed modification that he's seeking approval on is also in line with the curb cut, the city's curb cut. So with that said, I don't think it's --
It's an oversized curb cut.
Well, it's in line with it, so I don't think it's anything outrageous that's being asked for at this point.
I agree with you. I agree totally.
Bruce, just to clarify on that, the curb cuts are generally wider than the driveways themselves, correct?
Yes, they are. To allow for, to allow for turning into the driveway gives you a little bit of extra so you're not going up and over the, you know, the raised curb.
All right. Thank you. Okay.
It goes, he actually did the red lines right at the curb cut.
Right, so I think the point is, is that generally speaking, the curb cut is wider so you're not clipping your tires on the curb, right?
Right, yeah.
But not our problem.
Yeah, but it's another, now it's, once again, it's a question maybe of inches, so.
Sure. Right. All right. With that, with all that being said, can I have a motion to approve or deny the variance?
Motion to approve.
Second.
So a motion to approve from Montes and a second from Judy. And so just, just as procedure, so is this done, meaning normally, you know, we ask for certain things, certain requirements, but is this kind of retroactive or does his work still need to be done here?
On the driveway itself?
Correct.
I would make a recommendation just that, you know, that it is properly noted in there that the driveway should remain as only two cars wide and that the areas that were, where the concrete was removed must be, you know, replanted with grass, you know, and not gravel. So, but it's up to the board.
Given I made the motion to approve, I add all that as well.
Can I have a second to add those requirements?
Second.
All right. So there is a motion to approve the variance for additional off-street parking in the front yard with the conditions, number one, all are normal conditions, which are all fees be paid to the city, and then additional requirements that the, there is grass planted in the place where there was formerly concrete and now has since been removed. What, is that adequate?
Two cars width.
Oh, yes. And that there, it's for two cars, no attempting to squeeze further cars in practice regardless of the actual width that is given. So those are the conditions. Are those, are you, those adequate? All right. And then is, Bruce, is he able to get, does he need to take any other steps to get this C out if we approve the variance? Or does this, or CC or whatever he needs?
Yeah, he would need to get a CC, but I believe there's other work that we're putting together with that that's including his basement as well.
Tied into this with what would be this application? Okay.
You would have to do this in order to get the building application.
Right. So I'm just, no, I'm just thinking for the purposes of the outside date, would it be two years from this approval then, George?
We're talking about for expiration?
Yes, but it's tied in with other things that he's doing, right? So like, well, yes, I am talking about expiration.
Yeah.
Well, this is already done.
Yeah, except you have to put the grass in.
Oh.
But yes, but it's tied in, like, this building permit is tied into other things that he's doing at the house. So it's, I'm trying to give him a chance, an opportunity to do all the things, right? And so, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I think, Bruce, to the extent that it's tied into the other work, it's just because there was a violation? Is that what it was basically?
It was a, yeah, it was found during a violation for some other work that was going on.
Yeah.
We could do with this is we could keep it as a separate permit.
I was gonna say.
Let him come in, he could take in, he could take out a permit for this specific item, and once, you know, everything has been, once the grass has been, you know, once the grass has been planted, then we can go ahead and close out the permit.
All right. Okay. So I think that's, I think that is fair because it bifurcates it from what else, what other else he has going on at his property that really has nothing to do with this variance. So the final condition is that there is a building permit open, but to go to the building department and successfully bifurcate this from that work within six months of the date of the approval, should we approve it, and then closing that out within 24 months, which gives you quite a bit of time, but we're just going to keep it consistent because that's the language we always use. All right. So those are the conditions. Can I just get a re-motion, Montes?
To be very clear, the same as typical conditions with the addition of the driveway must remain two cars wide and that wherever the concrete, the areas where the concrete was removed must be replanted with the grass, not gravel. Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Motion to approve with all those conditions.
It's a motion.
Second.
Second, all right, and I'll call the roll. Stell?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Montes?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right. Agenda item number two has been requested to be adjourned, so that is adjourned to the December 17th meeting for now. That is 5 Willow Street. If anybody is here of the public or watching online with regard to that application, please make sure to check the agenda prior to December's meeting to see if they ask for a further adjournment or if it remains on the agenda. With that, I would like to, a motion to open the public hearing on agenda item number three.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Judy, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Stell, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And this is 100 Washington Avenue.
Judy, you're chairman, you're the board members. My name is Terry Tivbridge. I reside at 100 Washington Avenue in Beacon. And we're applying for area variance for, to legalize a covered eight-by-twenty porch and also to build a, new build of an eight-by-26 open porch.
How are you doing? Can you, can you just walk us through the, I guess, this application in that, I guess there is a, a current structure that is, that is not pre-existing non-compliant in that it was in violation due to when it was built, is that correct?
Yes, so the, the, you know, the enclosed porch on the back of the house was built without a permit. And then, at the same time, the, the owner's deciding to add with an open deck next to it.
And, and the building department determined that that initial structure, or I shouldn't say initial structure, but the, I guess, what was in theory an addition, was not in compliance just based on when, its opinion of when it was built relative to the zoning code?
Yes, well, there was, the, the house was built, there was a building permit for the house which did not include the enclosed porch on the back. And prior to the house being built, there was a variance given by the zoning board at the time, which I believe I referenced in the denial letter. But that only included the house, it didn't include the porch. So, the building permit originally was for the porch, was for the, you know, for the house itself. And then at some point between when the house was CO to today, the porch was built, and we just have no records of it.
Did you go and inspect the porch?
No, I didn't.
Corey did.
Corey, who's one of my deputies, he was out there to inspect it.
Well, I, I just have the building.
Yeah, so we did, yeah, we, you know, somebody from my office was out there to the site to review everything.
Sound and all of that kind of good stuff?
So if I could, just a little insight, so...
Yeah, please.
My father-in-law, that we now reside with, he built the house in eighty-two. He said it was originally just an open porch. Through, through some time, it became a closed-end porch, covered porch. And when we went in to build this, this open porch, this addition, we had no idea that it wasn't, wasn't permitted. So Corey did come out, we spoke, and he said, you know, the best way to try to resolve this is to legalize it and then go forward with the new build. My, my father-in-law had no idea, he didn't recognize back forty-seven years ago that the people that were built the house didn't have the permit for the deck. So, that's why we're here today.
Didn't have the enclosed porch permitted. But the deck is proposed, or it's there now?
Well, originally, originally, the, when he built the house, he built this eight-by-twenty, it was just a regular, just a deck off the back of the house.
Right.
And it has a few years.
This was a deck, now it's enclosed?
Now it's enclosed, correct.
Which is, then go through proper channels, building from.
Correct.
So the stairway and everything, oh, I'm sorry, Montos.
The deck is, and stairwell is proposed, is what you want to put up now?
The, the new build, the eight-by-twenty-six, yes.
Yes, and that's being held up right now because of the fact it's enclosed.
Yes.
Got it.
Well, I think, and so there's two variants, so just to clarify what the requests are, so there is, so yes, there is a fifteen-foot side yard setback that's required on each, each side. So the existing structure is in violation of that in theory, right? On the right-hand side of, although that's been there for more than forty years.
The house, yep.
Yep, right, and then there is a rear yard setback that, also, the, the existing structure is already in violation of that, and then the porch would, would further carry that along.
The existing structure, meaning the house itself is in violation with the rear yard, or the enclosed porch is in violation?
The enclosed porch is in violation. And, and so then this would, I, I believe I'm correct in that the enclosed porch would be the same distance from the rear yard as the deck?
Yes, we're gonna, what we want to do is keep that same line
Right.
as the enclosed porch is.
And so that is a two feet, a two-foot variance on, on the, on the rear yard, right? So, you know, somewhat minimal.
Well, that, that actually changed, it's not two feet, it's six feet.
It's six feet, okay. I must be looking at a...
We, we did an as-built survey,
Yeah.
and I, I guess forty-plus years ago, with the technology they have now, it changed the depth and size of the yard.
Got it. Is there, so the, the six feet on the side, is that from the rear? Is that just to the right side, or is it both sides?
It's only on, well, looking at the house, it'd be on your left side.
Looking from, from the front of your house?
Correct.
Right, okay, but, okay, and there's enough...
I'm just, I'm just going back to, just looking at my letter. I think that the side yard setback is six foot six inches.
Yep, and the, the rear, rear is eight feet seven and a quarter inches.
Yeah, and the rear yard, you're looking for, here, eight foot seven and a quarter inch. Where the rear yard.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, when I, when I had originally written, drafted up the letter, I guess I was getting too much in the weeds, that I had to have a variance for each piece of what I was trying to do, as far as the, the house that we, the house was actually a few inches short of the setback, the original house?
Yes, yeah.
So I, I thought you had to do a variance for each piece of what I was trying to accomplish.
Six inches, I mean, this should address everything with the numbers that I gave them.
And he needs fifteen, right?
Yeah.
To allow for an eight-six side yard, where he needs fifteen, so I got that. And then, this is twenty-six four.
So there's enough.
Where he needs thirty-five.
Correct, and there's nothing on this side.
And there's nothing on this side. And he's not extending the footprint of the approved raised ranch that's been there for forty years.
Correct, it's only, you know, in theory, this is extending, yeah.
Right, shrinking the, the rear yard.
Got it.
Sorry, needed to go through all that, it was a little...
Nope, nope, I know it was a little confusing at first.
Okay. Anyone from the public like to comment on this agenda item? Okay, with that being said, can I have a motion to close the public hearing on agenda item number three? Motion by Judy, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Stowe, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Onto the, the work. As to whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance, is plural. We're gonna take these together.
No.
No.
No. I also agree, I do not find that that will happen. As to whether the benefit the applicant seeks can be achieved through another method feasible for the applicant to pursue that does not require the area variances.
I would say no, because really, he's going in the same footprint as he already has there. He's just extending it along the same sightline, right?
Yes, ma'am.
I agree with Judy's comments.
Me too.
Yeah, I agree, I, I agree, I think that the variance is the only, variances are the only way to achieve what he wants to achieve. As to whether the requested variances are substantial.
I always get in trouble, I'm gonna say no. Because it's already there.
I guess I agree with her.
Before, I just want to confirm one thing before answering that. So the existing enclosed porch has no electric or plumbing in it, right?
That I don't know.
It does not, no.
There's nothing in there?
No, sure.
And from what you saw, it's structurally built proper?
Yes, well, I, I personally, I didn't go to the site, Corey, Corey, one of my deputy buildings, went out, and he inspected it. He had no, yeah, he said there was no issues with the structure itself. Just definitely, you know, he originally looked at it, came back to the office, and then he was one notice that there was no hose or, and it was something that was added, I guess, added to the property record at some point in time.
The reason I ask that question is because that's gonna influence my decision on whether it's substantial or not.
Understood, sir.
Right, because if, if I say it's not substantial, but there's structural issues or there's plumbing or electric in there, that would vary my train of thought. So given that, I think it's minimal risk and not substantial.
I will differ from my colleagues, not on the rear, rear, rear yard setback, I do, I do think that is not substantial, and while, I understand it's been there for forty years, I do, I do think the side yard setback is substantial, I don't think it's determinative, but I just think, you know, just by the math, right, it's substantial, in my opinion. As to whether, sorry.
Well, you'd have to move the existing, come down.
Totally.
You'd have to move it in on the house, you know, so it's already existing, the side yard, right? In fact, not his.
I didn't say it was a swell, I just said that the request was substantial. As to whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district?
No.
No, I don't think so.
I, I actually, I think it'll improve it, to be honest with you. I like the proposed deck, it keeps it all in line with the house, I think it unifies the back pretty well, so.
Yeah, I was there today, actually, checking it out, and I agree, I think it'll...
And the proposed staircase.
Yeah, looked, looked, looked really nice.
That way is really nice to us.
Yeah. As to, as to whether the alleged difficulty is self-created?
Yes.
Not sure if I would agree with that, given the structure is forty years old, to be honest with you, probably pre-zoning and all that, so. Look, I'll say yes, because otherwise I'm gonna get into an argument with my colleagues. But I'm on the fence whether it's a yes or no, so, but it's not the only deciding factor.
I agree with Montos, questionable.
Yeah.
It's self-created.
Started an argument.
I apologize.
Well, because his father-in-law did the building, so...
There's also the extension, there's also the new deck.
Yeah, but I mean, the original deck, it, it's like he, you know, so he didn't do it, I mean, the current.
But I still have, I have to take ownership for his actions.
As to whether the requested variances are or are not the minimum variance necessary, variance is necessary and adequate to preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood and the health, safety, and welfare of the community.
Yeah, I think without nickel and diming the width of the, the deck, given the deck is in line with the existing enclosed structure and is also in line with the footprint of the house, I don't think it's...
It's the minimal.
It's the minimal.
It's the minimal.
It's the minimal.
I agree.
I agree.
I, I agree as well, and just, George reminded me that there was a, a public comment, so I'm just gonna read this into the record. This is an email from Robert Ebling dated Sunday, the seventeenth. This is in reference to the application for the above-named individual at 100 Washington Avenue being held, being held today, now. They live at 87 Washington Avenue, and they are in full support of the variance application. They strongly believe that this process is ridiculous, that it is their property and not his, and they should not have to go through this process to rebuild a deck in their own yard just because of some law that says they need to ask their neighbors permission to do something in their own property.
I hope those people...
I, I, I hope they receive this permission to do this on their own property as they pay taxes and not their neighbors. He thanks us for a time of consideration after saying we should not exist. So, all right. With that being said, and then, should we, should we grant the variance? We have normal conditions, we went through them before, it would be that all fees are paid to the city, that the building permit is obtained by you within six months, and then all construct, I'm sorry, all construction is commenced within six months following the building permit, and then everything is completed within twenty-four months of the issuance of the building permit. Is that all in line with what you hope to do?
Yes.
Okay, very good, all right. Can I have a motion to accept or deny the variance? Motion by Stowe to grant the variance with the...
To grant it?
To grant.
Yes.
I think Judy used second, right?
Second.
Second from Judy, and then I'll call the roll. Montos?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Stowe?
Yes.
And I am a yes, four O, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. That's fun, yeah, you know, that was a great letter.
It was very funny.
All right, can I have a motion to open the public hearing on agenda item number four?
Motion open.
Motion by Montos, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Stowe, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, this is 113 De Poyster, or De Poyster, you know, we, people, you can fight me.
I, I also don't know.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is John Sullivan, I'm working with the applicants Lana and Nicholas Mikolewski. This is the owner here, Nick. We're in front of you this evening for an area variance relative to the side yard, fifteen feet is required. The applicants are proposing a two-story addition to the rear of the house where one story exists. So relatively, the old house was built prior to nineteen hundred, the, the parcels, a non-compliant parcel, it's fairly narrow. Eighty-five feet is required, along the street, it's only about seventy, and then as you get back, it's sort of narrow, so. The existing house at the front corner, left side, is twelve, a little over twelve feet, where the proposed addition is being located as it exists, is thirteen foot, seven or eight roughly. The new addition, we're proposing the second floor will overhang about a foot, and will be twelve foot, three inches from the property line. So, that is why we are here this evening for a side yard setback, requesting two foot nine.
So on the agenda, can you describe, there's, sorry. On the agenda, it uses the word demolish an existing one-story addition, is that true? So what is there?
Yeah, so in the, in the rear of the house, where there's an existing sunroom that's gonna be removed, and then also part of that between the sunroom and the, the main house, the two-story house, is, is like a great room, family room, sort of casual dining area, there's an office, there's a bathroom. So, that's also one story, that will be cut at that point.
Okay, so, so the house, the house currently is in the setback, and the addition is currently in the setback, correct? So, you are, are you proposing to widen the footprint?
Not the footprint, the second floor will overhang a foot, and the reason being is for, for architectural reasons, it's, looks better, you know, the house is very long. I think that with this overhang, you know, you can break the roof line, and it seems to make a lot of sense.
The overhangs into the side yard, the cant, like it's a little cantilever or sort of?
Correct, yeah.
And it's in the side yard, not the backyard?
Or both.
Well, the backyard overhangs as well, but the side yard is, is...
An issue.
Is where the, you know, variance is being requested, so.
So, yeah, I guess I was using the word footprint wrong, because I guess it sort of implies it being onto the ground, but in, in theory, there will be building closer to the neighbor, closer into the setback, just...
Only on the second level?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep, just, not, just trying to get the facts out, yep.
It should be noted that where this, the second-story addition is, is the same rear line of the house.
Sorry, could you repeat that?
So where, where the one story exists, the new two-story addition is aligned with that same point, roughly.
On the fir, on the first floor?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
And it's an awful long way to the neighbor, Jordan. I mean, it's, it's a long line.
To the, you're talking to the rear or to the side?
Yeah, to the side, it's a long way, if there's a neighbor over here, it's a long way.
Well, well, I think we're concerned with here, right?
Oh, on the other side of the street, yeah.
Well, I believe the rear yard borders the mountain.
Yeah. Montos?
No, I guess I was gonna ask the question, that the side yard is measured from the overhang to the line of the property, but before I asked that, I'm thinking, well, maybe that does make sense.
Yeah, so the, the overhang of the second floor would be now the furthest projection that it would be measured on.
Yeah, I guess that does make sense, because let's say you had a five-foot overhang, right? You, you'd wanna measure from that point over the property line.
You could really game it.
Yeah, you could really game it that way, right? So, so there's a seven-inch overhang, right? So that takes us...
It's a foot.
Huh?
Twelve inches.
Twelve, so how do we go from...
Well, see, yeah, the...
How do we go from thirteen feet down to twelve?
The reason being is that the house is not perfectly parallel to the property line.
Okay.
So it's, you know, it sort of veers off slightly.
So, what, what, the way I'm reading this is, turn it this way.
Yep. So, this gray here is the overhang?
No.
The dotted line.
Well, the dotted line is the overhang.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
Oh, that's this over here?
Got it. So, the dotted line is the overhang, so, he's basically asking for seven inches versus, what's this dash line here on the existing house? Is that part of the structure or not?
It's a setback.
Yes.
So, it's that conformant area?
That's correct. It's not compliant.
Is the 13 feet from here?
It's not compliant, yes.
To that point, or is it from here to that point?
The 13 feet's from here, so it's already, so it's 15 foot is required.
Yep.
So, from here to what exists is 13 feet, so the house is pre-existing non-conforming.
So, this dash line is part of the existing house?
This is the existing house?
Yep.
This is the setback.
Got it.
So, the house already exceeds the setback.
Got it.
But, as you can see, it is not parallel, so there's less of a need for.
Yep.
Yeah, right.
So, it's, again, I go back, it's a seven-inch delta between the 13-0 and the 12-3.
At that point, at that point where it's measured, yeah.
And the 13 is measured there, I.
Well, the 13 foot is the existing back corner.
Exactly.
So, as you get further going toward the street, it goes to 13-7.
Yeah, 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 got it.
Okay. Everyone good with the interrogation?
Yes.
Anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Okay, with that, can I have a motion to close the public hearing on agenda, item number four?
So moved.
Motion by Stowe. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Montos. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. As to whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance?
I say no.
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 I agree. As to whether the benefit the applicant seeks can be achieved through another method feasible for the applicant to pursue that does not require the area variance?
No.
No.
Okay, yeah.
All right. Can we know why?
I know why.
Can we give George some reasoning, please?
Because it's really over the footprint of the existing home. It's already out of compliance, you know, that's not self-created when it's out of compliance, like pre-zoning, so, that's why I said no.
Yeah, and the only increase in the variance is the overhang of the roof.
Which probably will look less.
Which I don't think is that substantial.
Right.
They're not there yet.
Well, I know.
As to whether the requested variance is substantial?
Let me think about that. No.
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 No, I think even mathematically, this one is not substantial. As to whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district?
No, but I think it'll improve it.
Yeah, no, I think it's fine.
Yeah, I agree with those comments.
Great. And as to whether the alleged difficulty is self-created?
Yes.
I don't know.
Okay. Montos?
I would say yes on this one. It is self-created, because.
Because he wants the eve?
Because he wants the overhang, right? So, when we get to the, maybe jumping ahead to the minimal, he could go without the overhang, but, yeah, I think it is self-created.
Yeah, of course, it's self-created. As to whether the proposed variance is the minimum or is not the minimum, variance necessary and adequate to preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood and health, safety, and welfare of the community?
Give or take a few inches, yes.
I believe it's the, it's not the minimum, because he doesn't need the overhang, but I think architecturally speaking, and the way he's trying to make this house look better and modernize it, I think it's the minimal to do that.
100% concur with Judy's comments.
And then, should we grant the variance? Are you able to comply with the normal conditions, which are all fees be current with the city, obtaining a building permit within six months, commencing construction within six months following issuing of the building permit, and completing construction and obtaining a CO within 24 months of the issuance of a building permit?
Yes.
Great, all right. Can I have a motion to accept or deny the variance with those conditions?
Motion to accept the variance with those conditions.
Motion by Judy. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Montos, and I will call the roll. Judy?
Aye.
Stowe?
Yes.
Montos?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. Thank you, 4-0. Congratulations.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Good night. All right.
Can I have a motion to open the public hearing on agenda, item number five?
So moved.
Motion by Judy. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Stowe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is 30 Willow Street. Welcome.
Welcome. Last but not least.
Now you know how we work.
I'm Rachel Saunders. I'm the homeowner, and this is Jesse Meyer, my partner. We are requesting a variance on the side lot, the six-foot variance. It is a pre-existing non-conforming lot. What we are looking to do, well, just by way of background, this is a two-family house. We live on one side with our two children, and on the other side, we rent the apartment. We, after 14 years of owning this house, need to rebuild our back porch. It is that time, and so, when we went down the road of thinking about rebuilding it, we thought about extending it out just a little bit, so we could put just a picnic table out there. It's sort of an awkward length right now. We are not intending to increase the footprint of what exists. We're looking to increase the raised part, the deck, three feet, and then a lower porch. So, it will not, and there is no way to move it in away from the side property line, because of the house sort of goes in where our basement doors are, so there is no way to move it farther away. And, you know, we see this as, given the footprint of our backyard, a fairly minimal, but to us, significant improvement in our backyard. So, that is our request. I mean, I'm happy to respond to your six questions. I mean, I don't think that, not only do I not think it's a detriment, but I think it will be an improvement to that backyard, obviously, to the back porch. It is a positive thing for us to rebuild it, because it needs to be rebuilt. There is no other way we could achieve that benefit in having a back porch and deck. And I think that we were mindful, when we created this plan, that we still wanted to have significant grass and greenery back there, so, you know, the vast majority of our backyard will still be greenery.
Just to confirm, two things, I think, that you said. One is that the footprint of what exists there is not changing, correct?
Well, it will be three feet longer on the raised portion, which is the deck, and then the lower portion, the.
The raised portion is the porch.
Sorry, the raised portion, and I think there's a typo in one of the, so the raised portion is the porch, and the lower portion is the deck. We decided to do a more permanent structure with the deck, because it will last longer. So, I think that the, so the covered porch, which is the raised portion, we are extending by three feet.
By what?
By three feet.
Towards the rear?
Towards the rear, but.
Where we have no problem with the.
Exactly. We could go back even further, but we decided not to maintain sort of our backyard.
And then, my second question is, is it true that the house actually is further into the setback than the deck already? That's how it appears on these plans.
So, the, yes, and we are not extending that. So, it is actually a foot away from our side line. So, it's five feet from the house to the boundary line, and our porch is six feet, and we are not extending that. We're not asking to get closer to the side boundary.
And then, Bruce, just to confirm, is the variance necessary because of a rebuild or because they're adding up?
Because they're adding to the back, they're making that porch larger, and the deck that they're putting on the ground as well is new, I believe, to the back of the.
Yes, right now, we have a stone sort of patio, but it's not a permanent structure, and we figured, while we were doing this, we might as well create something that will be a more, you know, permanent, that we don't have to, you know, change out.
Sure. So, is any portion of the new deck going outside of the boundaries of the footprint of the house?
No, no. It's not going outside the boundary of.
So, we need to do this because it's an existing, non-conforming, and just because they're building something else? Because what they're building doesn't seem to be.
So, they're building, so they're building the deck on the ground, which is, you know, within that setback area as well. So, the variance is needed for the new three-foot addition and for the, and for the new deck that's slightly above the ground. It's 18 inches, as shown on the plan.
Yes.
Any other questions from my colleagues?
I have no questions.
No questions. All right. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this application? Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Heidi Kitlis. I live at 32 Willow Street, right next door to Rachel and Jesse, and we have, they've discussed the project with us, and so, we're, you know, know all the details of it, and I am here to just ask the board to consider just adding a lattice or some kind of screened structure on, not structure, but just a lattice on the side of the porch, now that it's extended for privacy reasons, between our two properties.
So, you are the neighbor.
On that property line. Yes.
Where do you want the lattice?
On the north side of the porch, which faces us.
Like above the rail?
Yes, above the rail.
I don't know that we have any.
I was going to say, is that within our jurisdiction?
I don't know that we have any.
Well.
That's a good question. I, well, first, I would, first, I would say, Ms. Saunders, is that something that you would be, because I always say, just, you know, if neighbors could figure it out, that's the best way?
We're happy to put a lattice up there. That's no trouble at all, and we were planning on trying to move some greenery from the back portion of the porch over to the side porch to allow for a little more coverage and privacy anyway.
Okay.
More screen.
If you could just, sorry, guys, if you could just talk into the microphone, we're being recorded.
So, absolutely, I think what we, at this point, were willing to do is to add a structure to the plans, because frankly, of how much money it's costing to do this project, and, but we are more than happy to create some structure, you know, some lattice or something that.
Privacy screen.
Some privacy screen, and greenery, you know, greenery takes a little bit of time to grow, so, you know, in the interim, but not as a structure that would go into the plans, because we would have to start from scratch.
Are you able to, with a written, I suppose, into the resolution, should we approve this without it being on the plans in force? Do you have an enforcement mechanism?
Yeah, if, I mean, if it's put into the resolution, it's something that we could always enforce in the future, and also, it'd be a condition, once they come in to pull the building permit, prior to the issuance, we just have to, they would have to show us that they are putting something in that, on that one side.
Sure. Okay. Any other?
And if I could just add one.
Yeah, of course.
And I certainly wanted to just say, as a written addendum, not to change the structure or anything. Structure was the wrong word that I used, to not have to redo plans.
Sure. Okay.
Excellent.
Thank you. All right. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, unless you have any questions.
All right. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing on agenda, item number five?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Stowe, second by Judy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. As to whether the, sorry, as to whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby, sorry, or detriment to a nearby property will be created by the granting of the area variance?
No, I don't believe it will.
No.
No.
Can we give George some reasoning, please?
Well, it's the, it's the same, it's the existing structures line along the.
Footprint.
The footprint, yeah. So, it's not encroaching.
Further than it is.
And it probably, as they mentioned, it's time for it to be rebuilt. It's probably kind of an eyesore at this point.
It's actually one foot less than the existing structure, so I think that also supports the no.
I would agree.
Yeah, I agree. As to whether the benefit the applicant seeks can be achieved through another method feasible for the applicant to pursue that does not require the area variance?
No, I don't think there is, because, you know, as we keep saying, it's in the footprint, it's already in line with the current house, which is non-conforming, pre-zoning, so, no, I don't think there is any other way.
I agree with Judy.
Me too.
I agree as well. As to whether the requested variance is substantial?
I don't think it is substantial, especially the fact that it's one foot in from the existing house structure, and also, within the rear yard, I don't think it's substantial.
I think the only way it could be considered substantial is the notion that instead of a stone patio, they're now having a raised deck, but it's relatively low to the ground, so I don't think, in general, it'll, you know, cause attention to be drawn to it.
What is the question?
As to whether the requested variance is substantial?
Oh, I don't think so, no.
Yeah, I'm more in line with Stowe's thinking, I think, you know, generally, it's not, although you could argue 40% of a variance is substantial mathematically, I don't think practically.
40% of what?
It's a 10-foot setback that's required.
For this new deck.
And they're asking for it to be a six-foot setback, so, reducing the setback by 40%.
Right now, this is a stone patio.
So, it's a four-foot, it's, there's 10 foot required, six feet side yard.
So, that's four feet is the delta, right?
But it was already there.
No, no, that part is now a stone patio.
Oh, okay. I still don't think it's.
You're perfectly entitled to think that. As to whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district?
I don't think it will.
An adverse impact? Absolutely not.
Well, only with the proviso of the privacy screen on the side, but otherwise.
Yeah, so I think that mitigates any adverse effect or impact. As to whether the alleged difficulty is self-created?
Yes.
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 Of course. Of course. Is the variance, is or is not the variance, the minimum variance necessary and adequate to preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood and the health, safety, welfare of the community?
Yes.
I agree.
Well, with the usual quibble that you take a little spit time, could take some of the footage off the deck, but I don't see the point of it, so...
Sure, I think also, again, the neighborly agreement, they'll now be codified, presumably, helps mitigate that, to preserve and protect the character, health, safety, and welfare of the community. All right. And then, I just want to confirm, you intend and believe you can comply with the normal requirements, which are that all fees are paid to the city, you will obtain a building permit within six months of the date of this resolution, commence construction within six months following the issuance of that building permit, and then completing construction, and then obtaining the CO within 24 months of the date of the issuance of the building permit. Do you believe you can do all that? All right, and then, you have no, you have no objection to adding adequate screening? Do you want, George, how do you want that? I mean, I guess, suppose you're gonna draft it, but how would you articulate that? Just so we have it for the record?
Yeah, I mean, this is...
Can I comment on it before you give us the legal guidance?
What was that?
Can I comment on it before you give the legal...
Go ahead, yeah.
So, I'm of the opinion to make a motion to grant the variance, but I'm struggling with including the privacy screen because I'm struggling with how do you make that non-subjective but more objective and measurable for success, right? And so, I'm having a little struggle with how I would even consider proposing or saying a privacy screen when we're not getting specifics to the details to make it measurable and objective. I would rather go with what you said, and that is leave it to the neighbors to kumbaya and agree.
So, when you grant variance or anything with conditions, the conditions have to be reasonably related to harm caused by the variance.
Right.
This is a reasonable request, certainly by the neighbor, and I think the applicant is also... The fact that they're willing to resolve this is fantastic, I always say. The question then becomes legally entitlement to privacy kind of thing, right? Not that people could just go into your yard, but for example, if they were not, if they were extending the deck purely within the setback, there would still be a want for screening, but you don't need the screen. You're not entitled to that.
Unenforceable.
So, even though the applicant is seemingly willing to do this, putting it as a condition, to Montos's point, is, you know, iffy. It's reasonable, it's doable, I think, but I think the best way to do it, and also to avoid those enforcement kind of issues, is as long as the neighbors agree, you know, and hopefully, there's no cause for, oh, I think we're gonna leave from the meeting tonight, and they're gonna change their mind, you know, I don't know what the relationship between, you guys have to live next to each other, so you deal with that. I just think that's probably the best way. The other thing that that does is, in 200 years from now, is Bruce's, you know, successor gonna be going and seeing to see that there's a lattice there, there's a privacy screen or whatever the case is, because the variance, you know, continues to exist.
Well, conversely, this does run with the land, so they may kumbaya, but their successors may not kumbaya.
Absolutely.
And they could war.
But the next, the next neighbor might not care.
Right, so if there's no enforceability mechanism in the variance...
It shouldn't be in there.
Well, I don't know if it should or shouldn't.
I think it shouldn't be in there. That's my opinion because I don't think we really have the right to tell them to do that.
Yeah, when it comes to something like private, even though it is, it's a very important concern, it's a sort of right to privacy, right?
But I don't know that it's the neighbor's responsibility to, my neighbor, to provide me with privacy. If I want privacy, it's up to me to put things, it's up to me.
There's also that aspect of it as well.
But it's nice that they're agreeing, and they're gonna do it, I can tell.
Yeah, there's also that aspect.
So, I just don't think we have the right to really put it in there and any way of enforcing it. I agree with you, Montos.
I, yeah, that's, this is, this is sort of like fifty-five, forty-five kind of thing, but it's more likely that legally, if this were to ever become something that's maybe not a reasonable condition related to the...
Yeah, might get challenged and something doubtful, but I don't think we need it.
With that said, are you ready for motions or not yet?
I just didn't know if Stowe had any comments.
Well, I just was thinking about a case we talked about earlier tonight, where we required the fellow who would remove the concrete next to his driveway, we required him to put grass in.
That's a little different because you're not entitled to having, he's not entitled to having that as concrete, right? Because it's a parking area, so you have to keep the status quo, so to speak. When it comes to privacy, it's a little different because you may recall, we had an application in the past where someone wanted to do some work on the second floor, I believe, and the neighbor said, well, now there's gonna be windows, and they could look into my backyard.
Right.
But that's the nature of having a two-floor house kind of deal.
Yeah, right.
And it's not to minimize neighbors' concerns, by the way. It's just when it comes to privacy, it's the nature that, you know, this deck as it exists now also is elevated to have a view theoretically of the yard, right? So, the three feet, it doesn't suddenly go from you had no right to privacy to now you have an absolute right to privacy kind of thing. It's a legal nuance, but that's the difference between concrete in the front, that is a driveway, which is why they came back three meetings, and this kind of extended deck at an elevated height.
Okay, now I'm ready for a motion.
So, I make a motion to approve?
I second.
Is there any contingency?
With the, with the normal conditions.
With the normal conditions, as the city requires.
Seconded.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept the variance, to approve the variance with the normal conditions, which are the fees and the normal schedule. And we have a second from Stowe, and I will call the roll. Stowe?
Yes.
Judy? Montos?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting, the November 19th meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals?
Motion to close.
Motion by Judy. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Montos, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and then just want to confirm the date of the next meeting. Mercedes, please, I don't know. The next meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals is Tuesday, December 17th of this year. Thank you.
Who made that motion and who seconded? For you, for you.